Have students from Shapiro STEM Academy to help us lead us in the pledge. If you want to come on up.
As Legion, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We have certificates here for you. So it can be canceled. And Emmy, there you go. If you want to just say your name and your teacher and maybe your favorite, what's your favorite subject in school?
Music.
Music. Perfect. Love it.
Art.
Arts. Very good. Thank you so much. Parents, if you want to have a photo quick, you can do that. Thank you so much. We get it. Okay. So next up on the agenda, we have a presentation of the 2023-2024 Go Transit Development Plan by SRF Consultants. Feel free to take away.
Thank you. I'm going to just do a quick introduction. So I'm Jim Collins, the Transportation Director for the city. Go Transit works on a transit development plan approximately every five years, which is basically the strategic plan for our transit system. So this last year, we started the process of updating that plan. And we worked with the East Central Regional Plan Commission, who's here to to secure a planning grant. And then we ultimately put out a request for proposal. And we chose SRF Consultants to complete the study for us. So we've been working with them for about a year now on this plan. So tonight, we have Matt Stegeman from SRF Consultants, who's going to walk you through a brief presentation. This is the abbreviated version of a very large plan for time's sake. So he's going to present that. And then there'll be an opportunity if you have any questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jim, for that introduction. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. So as Jim mentioned, my name is Matt Stegeman. I'm a transportation planner with SRF Consulting Group out of the Twin Cities, Minnesota. We were contracted by East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, who's here in the room today, as well as Go Transit, to complete this plan, which is a five-year look ahead at opportunities for Go Transit to expand and improve transit service and better serve residents throughout the city of Oshkosh. So as part of this plan, we've worked together with Go Transit and East Central for a year, informed by a steering committee composed of city and Go Transit staff, as well as members from around the community, including community organizations, you know, groups that deal with seniors and other transportation services, to really guide this process and the public outreach that's been involved. So we're here to present the final results of this plan, which we hope will reflect the wishes of the community, the desires of riders and residents, and some key near-term wins for service improvements based on feedback from the public and from Go Transit staff. So in general, this transit development plan process has included analysis of existing conditions like existing ridership, financial data of Go Transit, as well as the demographics of the community, including the socioeconomic makeup, presence of folks who may not have access to a vehicle or may have lower incomes that make transit more valuable to them. We also have engaged stakeholders to identify opportunities for improvement. So looking at routes that may be underutilized, looking at places where there might be an opportunity to help the system better serve riders. We've worked together to develop and evaluate some alternatives that have resulted in the scenarios that you'll see today. So here we are in the fourth stage of the process, which is really to to adopt a final plan that reflects the needs of the community. So in this final plan, we've separated the recommendations into two scenarios. One, looking at the near term, which we would anticipate to be in the next one to two years. And Go Transit has indicated they'd be interested in implementing these changes as soon as August of this year. And then we have a long-term scenario that looks at future opportunities that could involve service expansion. The near-term route changes include modifications modest to minor to the majority of Go Transit routes. So currently, there are nine routes throughout the city of Oshkosh. They cover a little over 80% of the city. And what we have done is is come up with some minor modifications to help these routes function better within existing resources. So none of these changes represent a cost increase. Rather, they result in changing route alignments, changing some stop locations, and changing how routes work together to get customers where they need to go. So briefly here, we have a change on Route 1 that is just a modest alignment change that's related to a larger change on Route 3. Route 2, which you see in green, sort of in the center of the north side of Oshkosh, will streamline trips to eliminate some deviations, some back and forth that the route currently does to help improve travel times. Route 3, which you'll see in orange on the map at the right, is currently a loop route that serves a broader geographic area. This route is a little underutilized today. So Go Transit indicated that there was a need to look more at ways to make that that service different and better. So the key changes that we've made to that route are to reverse the route's direction, reduce its footprint slightly, and by doing so, enable the route to come south of the river and serve the new Theta Care Hospital location that's due to come online at 6th and Oregon. So we know that that as new destinations pop up in the community, we want to make sure that service is there to meet the needs of folks who might need to get there. Route 4, which you'll see in pink on the north side of Oshkosh, has extra time in the schedule currently. So the question was, how do we make that route more useful to folks? And what can we do to to use those extra minutes to better serve some additional needs? And so that route, we've actually been able to to draw into the schedule to extend into the north side industrial park. So to serve Amcor Flexibles, former Bemis, as well as UPS and other nearby destinations that really aren't accessible today, but where lots of people live and lots of people work, excuse me. Then finally, we have some modifications to Routes 5, 7, and 8. Route 5, which you'll see in yellow here on sort of the west side of the river, is realigned slightly from where it goes currently. Currently, it's on High and Algoma, northwest of downtown. The reason that that route is shifting is that we've done basically a swap in its its coverage area with parts of the Route 3 that you see in orange. So really, this is intended to to sort of right-size each route's geographic market and better align it with where where folks are needing to travel. On Route 7, we have one modest change that you'll see sort of in the northwest corner of the Go Transit service area. Route 7 is there in brown. And currently, it's it's one of the routes that that serves Oshkosh Avenue, west of 41. And one change since the previous transit development plan that happened in the city is that the city annexed the site where the Department of Motor Vehicles is located. So that's one request that that has been received over the years to get service to and from the DMV location. And now that it's within the city of Oshkosh, Go Transit can actually go there and serve it. So what we've drawn into the plan is to to go ahead and serve the DMV upon request. So riders on the bus can ask the driver to drop them off there. And folks who are there and need a ride can call Go Transit Dispatch for a pickup. So that's a that's a change that will allow people to get to and from that destination. Finally, there's a small change to the Route 8, which you see in purple. And that's really going to be downtown in order to speed things up slightly. So it'll streamline its its last couple blocks into the transit center. In addition to to changing route alignments, we are also exploring changes to how the routes work together. So in the transit industry, we call this interlining. When a number of routes come together, maybe at a downtown transit center or another location, and one route turns into another. So interlining is what allows transit agencies to use one bus to cover multiple routes and enable riders to travel through in the same direction without getting off and on a vehicle. So it's kind of a best practice where you have many routes coming together in order to reduce the need for for people to transfer. So we have some changes outlined to how interlining works in Oshkosh. The route pairings are listed on the screen here and include Routes 1 and 4, 2 and 8, 5 and 7, and 6 and 9. In short, what these changes do in comparison to the current route alignments or interlining arrangements is, you know, we've, instead of having two routes that may operate next to each other, turning into each other at the downtown transit center, you have a route that allows you to continue in the same direction. So if you're on the north side of the city, you're heading south, you'll, at the downtown transit center, your bus will turn into a south-side route that continues in the same direction. So those are some of the changes that we're proposing for the near term here. In terms of outcomes, I know that's that's always a key in communicating these these changes to the public and in justifying sort of the changes that that are being proposed. We have done analysis of the the coverage area of the existing and the proposed services. And what we've found is that the updated route network would maintain the existing coverage of households without vehicles, of low-income populations, of minority populations, and of the existing riders in the system. So really, in terms of the overall coverage area, we're not disenfranchising folks who may otherwise, you know, have service today but might might not have had it in the future. We are expanding the coverage of the total area within the city of Oshkosh. So we've expanded the footprint slightly, especially on the north side. With the the Route 4 change to the north side industrial park, we've added the ability for folks to access 2,000 more jobs within a quarter mile of the route. So really, that's that's adding fairly significantly to to what's available today. And we're covering more of the areas that you see in green here that have a density that's supportive of transit. So really, when you think about where buses work best, it's in places where destinations are close together, where you have, you know, activity that's concentrated at a few key locations. And that industrial park is an example of one place that had the density to support transit but wasn't covered today. In addition to the proposed route and interlining changes in the near term, this plan does also call for some fair policy changes. The headline change here is that it is recommended that there would be a fair increase in the one-way fare from $1.50 to $2. As you can see in the table on the right, that is in line with peer agencies in Fond du Lac and Appleton, as well as around the state, the majority of which have had to increase fares in recent years to match expenses. Along with this fair change, though, there is a proposed new fare option that would reduce costs for people who use transit the most. And that's the day pass option. So one one thing that both Appleton and Fond du Lac have introduced in the recent years is a day pass where any any folks who think they may take two or more trips in a day could buy a day pass that could cover as many trips as they want in a single day period for the price of just two one-way fares. So if you think about people wanting to use transit, not just to get to and from work, but also to use it for other purposes, this would reduce the cost barrier for folks to to do that. In addition, there would be a modest increase to the the monthly pass to bring it in line with the lowest of all peer agencies that we looked at, at $40 a month. And along with that, Go Transit would plan to preserve, in response to public feedback, the current three-month discount. So if you buy three one-month passes at once, there will be a discount of $15 on that. So it would bring that price in line with what you would pay for three one-month passes today without the discount. Additional changes, currently, there are punch cards available on board buses. It's proposed that those be eliminated. They don't offer a discount. So really, what they do is tend to complicate the drivers' interactions with customers because they have to sell and carry change on the bus. So there will be additional opportunities to explore alternate fare options and promotions. Go Transit is actively working on a fare technology procurement that could enable, you know, additional discounts, including fare capping, which could be done at a daily or monthly level to reduce the cost that that people pay. But really, this fair policy change is designed to maintain affordability, because that's been something Go Transit has has been very proud of over the years, while reflecting growth in operating expenses. And so what we saw in in the most recent year available was that that Go Transit saw a ridership increase of nearly 10%, but operating costs were increasing almost 16% year over year. So if you think of of the way many industries have changed in the past several years, those cost increases are not out of the ordinary. In many cases, they're due to rising costs for fuel, for parts, and for higher wages to to attract and maintain employees. But we see the fair increase as a way to maintain the fiscal stability of of Go Transit while still keeping reasonably affordable options for customers. So in addition to the the near-term recommendations, which include the route changes and the fare policy changes, we have explored long-term recommendations that could be implemented if and when additional resources become available for transit. Those include both changes or potential changes to fixed route bus service, like Go Transit operates today, or the exploration of new transit types that could be a little more flexible. So looking at fixed route service expansion, we've outlined three potential options that could be explored depending on the level of resources available and public interest. These could include adding additional frequency. Currently, all routes in the Go Transit system operate every 30 minutes. So we've put into the plan the cost requirements and vehicle requirements that would be needed to increase frequency on four routes, the four most productive routes, to every 15 minutes. In addition to that, we've put as an option in the plan extending the span of service of of all routes. So currently, routes operate until, you know, about 6:00 in the evening. And, you know, we heard from the public as part of this process that folks are interested in additional evening service. So we've put into the plan that adding evening service on all routes would cost approximately $900,000 a year. So with with these changes or proposed options, we've outlined the resource requirements so that policymakers and staff have an understanding of what the resource commitments might be if those were to be pursued. We also have identified the potential for another fixed route to add to the system. Really, the only portion of the city without coverage today is the southeast side. And so we have drawn a route and have cost information related to that here that could, you know, serve more of the residents in that area of the community. As a second option in the future, we have, you know, some proposed ideas for Go Transit to pursue what's called microtransit. This is a new emerging mode in transit that is more flexible than your everyday fixed route bus and is designed to to mimic the customer experience that people might be used to from app-based services like Lyft or Uber, but using transit vehicles and public resources. So it's sort of a blend of, you know, the idea of public transit and the resources and public openness and public commitment of public transit while, you know, delivering a user experience that's a little more customized and that is designed to meet demand for trips where they are and only travel to those destinations that people actually want to reach. So what you can see here is that we've drawn three potential zones in the city of Oshkosh that could be places that could be served by microtransit if desired. These are places that are within the city limits, but that are, due to geography or proximity, are difficult to serve with a fixed route bus within the existing schedules. And so the idea is that you'd have one or two microtransit vehicles circulating in each of these zones. And they would be dispatched automatically to pick up riders when they request a ride in the app or over the phone. So this is is basically a concept that Go Transit has indicated they'd like to explore further. Typically, what we see agencies do when they have an inclination or, you know, needs in the community that would be best served by microtransit is is that they do a pilot project first. So looking at a promising market, implementing service, letting customers know it's a pilot so that, you know, the service can be measured and tested to see how well it meets demand. And then if justified, it could be continued into a program. So we've outlined several different scenarios that could be use cases for microtransit, one being extending the coverage of the system, which you see in the map at right. The second being to provide evening service. You may be able to provide evening service using microtransit vehicles at a lower cost than running the whole fixed route system. That's something that we've seen certain agencies test and could be a potential pilot project as well. And then finally, the last thing that we've seen other agencies do with microtransit is sometimes replace a fixed route that may be underperforming. So in some cases, you have a bus route that's operating in areas that really don't generate much ridership, but maybe are important for people to access. So there's a need to have some way for people to get there. But maybe the best way is not a whole 40-foot or 35-foot bus. So we've seen agencies convert from one type of transit to the other depending on the level of demand. So what we recommend is that Go Transit go ahead and implement the near-term changes. They've indicated August 2024 is the the proposed timeline for the near-term changes, including the the route changes and the fare policy changes. Those changes were recommended for implementation at the March Transportation Committee meeting. And that's the reason that we're here speaking with you all today for Council Action. Prior to that implementation, there would be rider notifications. There would be actions put in place to develop new maps and schedules and signage. There would be driver shift assignments. Those would be updated with the new route system. And drivers would obviously be trained on the new routes before service were to change. So at this time, you know, we are we are presenting this information so that you can make an informed decision on on moving forward with the plan. And we hope that that this represents a plan that reflects the needs of the the community as expressed through our process and, you know, can set Go Transit up for future service expansion as those resources may become available. So Jim, I don't know if there's anything that you'd like to add to that summary. But we thank you for your time and attention to this presentation and look forward to Council Action. Thank you.
Thank you. Any initial questions for consultants? This is later on in the agenda. We'll have discussion, too. Good. Thank you. Appreciate it. And next up, we have public hearings for four resolutions. So for public hearings, we'll have three readings. And I'll ask if anyone is interested in speaking on each of these to come on up after it's read. So first one, Resolution 24-163, approved final resolution for special assessments for Contract 24-02. Sanitary sewer main and laterals, new and relay. Water main and laterals, new and relay. And storm sewer main and laterals, new and relay. For Wagu Avenue, North Main Street to 50 feet east of Mill Street. Mill Street, 50 feet north of Wagu Avenue to 50 feet south of Wagu Avenue. State Street, 75 feet north of Wagu Avenue to 75 feet south of Wagu. Broad Street, 75 feet north of Wagu to 125 feet south of Wagu. And Bay Street, 50 feet north of Wagu to 50 feet south of Wagu. Anyone, I'm not seeing anyone registered to speak on that one. We'll do a second reading. Resolution 24-163, approved final resolution for special assessments for Contract 24-02. Sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, and storm sewer main and laterals for Wagu, Mill Street, State Street, Broad Street, and Bay Street. And third and final reading for Resolution 24-163, approved final resolution for special assessments for Contract 24-02. Sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, and storm sewer main and laterals for Wagu, Mill, State, Broad, and Bay Streets. Final call. Okay. We will, I will consider that public hearing closed. I'll take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Bulow.
I just wanted to kick it over to the city manager, of course, because we've been talking a lot about special assessments. But just to make it painfully obvious of why these special assessments still exist, since they are not covered by the roadwork reconsideration that we've done.
Thank you, Councilmember Bulow. The, as we were educating the public on what was being done, the road reconstruction special assessments have been eliminated. These special assessment proposed here are merely for the utility laterals that go into individual properties. And because they they benefit specifically and only the individual properties, the special assessments are still in order. In terms of water, it's still required by the Public Service Commission, and we maintain that consistency with sewer and storm sewer.
Any other discussion? See, none. Please call the roll on Resolution 24-163. Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Karid Six? Next, Resolution 24-164, approved final resolution for special assessments for Contract 24-07. Sanitary sewer main and laterals, new and relay. Water main and laterals, new and relay. And storm sewer main and laterals, new and relay. For Cherry Street, West Irving Avenue to West New York Avenue. Scott Street, 75 feet west of Cherry Street to 75 feet east of Cherry Street. Woodland Avenue, 100 feet east of Cherry Street to Cherry Street. Prospect Avenue, Elmwood Avenue to 75 feet east of Cherry Street. And Vine Avenue, 75 feet west of Cherry Street to Cherry Street. No one registered for that item?
Is it possible to speak if we aren't registered?
Yep. Come on up. Yeah. If you want to use the mic over on the left side? Yeah, this side. Yep. If you can just give your name and address for the record, and you'll have you have five minutes to speak if you'd like.
Thank you. My name is Aaron Preston. I own properties at 839 Prospect and 757 Prospect, as well as on Wisconsin Street that was under construction last year as well. This is my first time. And so I have some questions, but I'm not sure exactly. But I know five minutes. So thank you. Thanks for hearing from us today and making this a public issue that we're allowed to come come and speak on. I know that for you guys, affordable housing is something that has to be important to us as a city. It's, I think, one of the primary objectives in being able to provide for the community in effective ways. And so some, I know there's a balance in a lot of different things. And as I've listened to some of the forums on affordable housing, both here and regionally, I know that it's it's a pressing issue for a lot of families. My wife and I have just three rental properties. We're kind of new into this. But it's something that we want long-term. But we also have the balance of long-term for our retirement and income. And we want to provide affordable housing for families and for a few college students as well. We've we've really run into some issues with this, though, in recent ways. Some of the questions that I have. In 2016 and 17, Prospect Street was completely redone. And one of my questions is if there was any reason why the water and sewer mains weren't replaced when the entire street was done less than eight years ago? Again, I don't expect to like an immediate response right there. I will say that it's discouraging as a property owner to have the street completely done and then now to be paying for it separately in a short time after that.
I see some staff coming on up.
Yeah.
I think it would be appropriate. We'll keep track of your questions, and then at the conclusion, we'll answer them for you.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. Second, I also want to say thank you for giving the explanation on why the assessments are placed for the water. Thank you. Because that is one where I was like, hmm, I'm seeing that there's no longer an assessment on sidewalks, which we've been paying for for quite some time. And now it's not, which I'm grateful for, even though ours are all done. not, which I'm grateful for, even though ours are all done, but yet we still have the water assessments. Also, the street assessment that we just paid, or in the process of paying for our house on Wisconsin, is pushing us at just over $13,000 that is being billed for on that. One of my other questions is, I own 839 Prospect, there's 20 houses on Prospect Street, 19 of them are estimated to be budgeted at the exact same cost of $3,000. One of them, 839, is projected to be at the cost of $6,000. I was a little bit curious about that as well. I did try to, I know that there was opportunities to make phone calls or to come and speak with people today. I did not have the opportunity during that time, but I did call and haven't received back yet, even though it's been recent. One of my other questions is more on the payment plans. Genuinely, there's just a question for me of why is there a interest that's charged to property owners that choose not to pay, that elect not to pay the entire cost of the assessments upfront? And I say that just from personal, like, the personal standpoint, is that we're facing $19,000 of assessments, and if we're not able to pay that all at once, which we're not, then we're going to be charged 6% interest for electing to spread that out over the course of five years on our tax bills, or if we elected for further bills. But it's discouraging, again, that we don't have a choice on whether the work is going to be done or not, and then we're going to be charged interest for not being able to pay the entire $19,000, which we didn't really have the time to prepare for as well. And part of it is because we, excuse me, value of affordable housing, we haven't saved as much because we haven't charged as much, and so now we're also going to be penalized, it feels like personally, for choosing to provide quality affordable housing. We're not going to be charged interest from the city on that as well. The last thing that I, question I have is, I'm a little unsure of why a public hearing is still needed for a place like Prospect, even though I know it's a part of the entire one, because the work has already progressed. The entire street's already torn up, the work's already going on, and so for me to come and speak today, like, I hope that I can get some answers. I know there's more than one side to every story, and so I know that there's probably good reasons, and it's worth me coming to learn those things. But the work's already going on, so I don't know why there's a public hearing that happens after the work's already begun. I appreciate your guys' time, I appreciate being able to learn and to be able to hear a little bit from you guys as well, so thank you for taking my questions today.
Yeah, thank you. Seth, you want to?
Once you're done with all the hearing, you can answer questions.
Okay. I will, thank you for your questions. I'll do a second reading and third reading if there's anyone else who'd like to speak on this particular resolution. So Resolution 24-164, approved final resolution for special assessments for Contract 24-07. Sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, and storm sewer main and laterals for Cherry Street, Scott Street, Woodland Avenue, Prospect Avenue, and Vine Avenue. Anyone else interested in speaking on that item? Otherwise, last call, third and final reading, Resolution 24-164, approved final resolution for special assessments for Contract 24-07. Sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, and storm sewer main and laterals for Cherry Street, Scott Street, Woodland Avenue, Prospect Avenue, and Vine Avenue. I will consider the public hearing closed, and I'll take a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
And discussion.
Mr. Robby?
I'll start just briefly, but some of the details I think Mr. Robby can do. In terms of the work beginning before the hearing, the hearing is not to decide if the project is getting done, the hearing is only and exclusively about the special assessments for the utilities. So I think that, I hope that answers that question. I think James was taking notes and can probably answer some of the other questions.
I've got a few notes, I apologize if I didn't catch all of them. Mark, I don't know if you want to touch on the interest rate thing, or you want me to try to tackle that?
No, you know what, you're not the finance guy, so, the finance director is here, but I think I can wrestle with that. The cost that the city must borrow for the cost of, all of the cost of the project, so to the degree that someone is doing on a payment plan, it's to cover the cost of the city doing that, and that's standard in every city that does special assessments anywhere. So the Long Range Finance Committee made a recommendation to council to lower that interest rate to 6% a few years ago, even though interest rates have gone up, the committee has not made a recommendation that's implemented yet.
Actually, it went down to 4% and went back up, I believe, August of last year to 10%.
Okay, see, that's why you should have answered the question. You're doing pretty good, so I'm sorry about that. It's the Long Range Finance Committee that does that.
And City Engineer Justin Girick and I were discussing the comment about Prospect Avenue recently being redone, and neither of us can recall that in our memory that it was, has been recently redone. One of the biggest things for getting the water main done at this time is it is undersized, it is a four-inch water main, and that is one of the big directives that the Department of Natural Resources has put on us, is getting all of our four-inch main replaced as quickly and as reasonably as possible. So that is one of the challenges with that particular street, and certainly with Cherry being done right there, it was a good timely instance to tackle that piece of water main. And I don't remember if there were any others, those are the only notes I had on the questions.
The 839 lot?
Oh, yes, the amounts. So the estimates estimated are per lateral, so it's a total of, in general, it's going to be a sewer lateral, a storm sewer lateral, and if there needs to be water. For the one property that has two, is strictly based on the information that we have available from our televising of the sanitary sewer system. Once we actually get in and start construction, if there are two laterals that are live and functioning, we do need to reconnect them both. If that is what is determined, you know, if the property owner is able to, you know, redo some plumbing to get them only to one, that is something that can be tackled during the project, but at this point in time, it's based strictly on the information we have available during televising, and the contractor and our staff will be working with the property owners to conduct some testing, you know, to make sure what laterals are or are not live, so that if there are some that are not live, that were, you know, previously installed, but they're not being utilized, then we don't need to reinstall them, but we don't have that information available really at this time until we can start construction and start exposing it. So that would be something that when the project is certified, if only one set is installed, the certified amount would be reduced. And as a reminder to council, you know, these estimates that are put forward right now, this is not billing, billing and final numbers won't be available until August of next year, you know, so this is just an estimate at this time, and the certifications, you know, right now, we are working on certifications for last year's projects, to be getting those down to finance and the clerk's office to get those final things sent out along with all of the payment options, so, you know, getting the invoices or the bills sent out for special assessments is always the year after construction at the soonest, and sometimes for some complicated projects, or if it's a DOT-led project, it sometimes takes two years because it takes that long to get all the information together.
And so about a year and a half from now, the property owner will have the option of choosing to go on the payment plan or pay it upfront, or put it on a lump sum payment on the tax bill in one year. Those are basically the options that they're, that you're given, but it'll be a full year before you get anything finalized, and depending on what happens with that property with apparently two possible laterals, if that can get reduced, that's fine. We're required by law to give the maximum amount so that we don't have to invite somebody back for a second hearing. It will not exceed this amount, and it can be lower.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I've got quick questions, city manager, roll off. As you mentioned, this project, right, the project's already been approved, so if we were to vote no tonight, that just means that we'd have to change the funding source to debt or something like that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bulo?
I just wanted to ask Mr. President if you had any other questions. I know they went through what you had, but if you had any other?
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it, and any of the information as well.
Do you want to step up to the mic?
Just so we can all hear. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you as well for the information. 2015 is when my second daughter was born, we lived in the house at 839 during that time, and I very, very, very vividly remember the first year of her life fighting in and out of the construction when she was an infant. So 2016 is when the city redid that entire street, not that, just as a point of reference. The second thing in that is the question about how to actually elect to go down to one water line, and just my question is to make sure that, like, that there's actual opportunity for us to do that, like, because I'm not going to be on site, like, waiting for them to do it, and so how does that happen?
It's not something we're going to be able to resolve with you here tonight. My recommendation would be to reach out to City Engineer Justin Girick and start working through that. They'll likely connect you to our construction management supervisor to have those conversations.
Yeah, good, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council? Okay, see none, please take the roll on Resolution 24-164. Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Kerred Six? Next, the third public hearing for Resolution 24-165, approved final resolution for special assessments for Contract 24-12. Sanitary sewer main and laterals, new and relay, water main and laterals, new and relay, and storm sewer main and laterals, new and relay, for East 7th Avenue, South Main Street to the east end of East 7th Avenue, South Main Street, 100 feet north of East 7th Avenue to West 8th Avenue, Grand Street, East Parkway Avenue to East Irving Avenue, Oxford Avenue, 100 feet west of Grand Street to Grand Street, Dale Avenue, 100 feet west of Grand Street to Grand Street. I don't see anyone registered, anyone in the public interested in speaking on this item? Nope. Second reading, Resolution 24-165, approved final resolution for special assessments for Contract 24-12. Sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, and storm sewer main and laterals for East 7th Avenue, South Main Street, Grand Street, Oxford Avenue, and Dale Avenue. And third and final reading, Resolution 24-165, approved final resolution for special assessments for Contract 24-12. Sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, and storm sewer main and laterals for East 7th Avenue, South Main Street, Grand Street, Oxford Avenue, and Dale Avenue. I will close that public hearing, and I will take a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bulo?
I just wanted to clarify, because I do live on Dale Avenue, but I'm not in the affected area, so I don't have a conflict.
Anyone else? Okay, please call the roll on Resolution 24-165. Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Kerred Six? And last one, I'm sure you're all glad to hear me stop talking on all these. Resolution 21.
We know, no, I moved around to call.
Resolution 24-166, approved final resolution for special assessments for Contract 24-15. Sanitary sewer main and laterals, new and relay, water main and laterals, new and relay, and storm sewer main and laterals, new and relay, for West 5th Avenue, 75 feet west of Michigan Street to Iowa Street, West 7th Avenue, 100 feet west of Michigan Street to 100 feet east of Iowa Street, West 6th Avenue, 75 feet west of Michigan Street to 75 feet east of Michigan Street, and 50 feet west of Iowa Street to 100 feet west east of Iowa Street, Michigan Avenue, 75 feet south of West 7th Avenue to West 5th Avenue, and Iowa Street, 50 feet south of West 7th Avenue to West 5th Avenue. Anyone here from the public to speak on this? Nope. Second reading, Resolution 24-166, approved final resolution for special assessments for Contract 24-15. Sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, and storm sewer main and laterals for West 5th Avenue, West 7th Avenue, West 6th Avenue, Michigan Street, and Iowa Street. And third and final reading for Resolution 24-166, approved final resolution for special assessments for Contract 24-15. Sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, and storm sewer main and laterals for West 5th Avenue, West 7th Avenue, West 6th Avenue, Michigan Street, and Iowa Street. Okay, I will close that public hearing and take a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
See none, please call the roll on 24-166. Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Kerred Six? Okay, next up, we have citizen statements to council, these are for items that are not on the agenda tonight. I don't see anyone registered, checking the public, anyone? Nope. Okay. We'll move on to consent agenda. Can I get a motion and a second on consent?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Please call the roll on the consent agenda. Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Kerred Six? Next up, pending ordinances, next, first one is ordinance 24-182, add bus loading zone on Algoma Boulevard in front of Reed Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. See none, please take the roll. Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Kerred Six? Next up, ordinance 24-183, amend section 6-3, 6-8, and 6-19 of Chapter 16 pertaining to limit on number of animals in commercial kennels. Take a motion and a second.
Second.
Discussion. None, please call the roll, ordinance 24-183. Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Kerred Six? Next up, ordinance 24-184, approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district, SMU, to suburban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay for property located at 555 South Washburn Street. Plan commission recommends approval.
Move it.
Second.
Please take the roll. Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Kerred Six? Ordinance 24-185, approve text amendments to the zoning ordinance, plan commission recommends approval.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Good, please take the roll. Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Kerred Six? Next up, we have new ordinances, these two will not be voted on until the next council meeting, April 23rd, so no formal action tonight. First up, ordinance 24-186, approve request to annex to the city from the town of Oshkosh Valley Christian School, plan commission recommends approval. And ordinance 24-187, approve zone change from institutional district to institutional district with a planned development overlay at 4311 Jackson Street, plan commission recommends approval.
There's a citizen statement.
Oh, citizen statement, yep, come on up. If you can just give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
My name is Kelly Thompson, I'm with Context Architects, I'm actually the lead designer on this particular project, and I'm just going to respectfully ask that you change the rules, to go ahead and make a formal motion on that, since there isn't any objection or any conversation by concerned citizens today.
Sure.
Just ask your consideration for that.
Any interest in making a motion to waive the rules?
Can I just ask what the impotence is to, is there a time constraint, or what is that?
Yeah, there is, I've got my ring construction with a bucket ready to stick it in the ground, so there is a So there is a time, there is time constraint there. We would like to get this facility up and operational, probably by the end of this year. And any, any, any day or two will help achieve that goal.
Okay. So I'm going to move to waive the rules and adopt on the first reading?
I guess I have a question.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Have we traditionally in the past waived this rule with their rationale that they want to move quicker? Or, I guess my worry is that everybody wants to move quicker, and we're going to have everybody wanting to waive the first reading?
It's a great question. Kelly's ready to answer it.
I don't think staff was aware that they wanted to waive the first reading. Typically, then we would put it on the agenda and discuss it and let council know that we are proposing to waive it on the first reading. So that's something we typically proactively do, so everybody is aware that there, it could be waived on the first reading.
True. And I guess, just in the past, we have waived the first reading, like, due to time constraints, or is that not the case? Or I guess?
Not too often for this type of situation where it's a rezoning to add a PD overlay onto it. It's something we can certainly do, but it's something we do not make a practice of.
Okay.
Since Councilmember Stevenson's already opened the questions, when it does come to staff, I usually have some questions. So if you would indulge me, I'd like to ask some questions. Does this require a specific implementation plan approval from the Plan Commission?
Yes.
So when is that scheduled?
That would be the next meeting. That's going to be, the SIP will be on the next meeting agenda. Because we have two readings. We do the rezoning and then the SIP at PC, but then we have to hold the SIP, because there's two readings for the rezoning. So there still needs to be the SIP at the upcoming meeting on the 23rd. And I, I would have to check to see if they've gone through our site plan review, where they have the full set of civil plans, and to see if they're ready, if we're even ready to issue a permit. I did not have a chance to look it up.
And you would need the SIP ahead of time before starting construction.
And that's why I asked the question, because oftentimes with the council, we'll see the ordinance get adopted for the zoning, and then, and then later in the meeting, you have the SIP get approved. You're really not gaining anything by waiving the rules tonight if there was, if that was the only thing. But typically, when you've got something of this magnitude, which is, you know, it's a fairly good-sized building, they can't start construction until after the SIP is approved anyway.
And site plan.
And the site plan. Well, thank you, because that's why you, that's why you get paid to do your job. But I asked the questions about those, because then what's the urgency? I would suggest to this gentleman, you know, respectfully, that this isn't going to help you at all by waiving this, and then you do it in the order in which we would normally present it to council. And you've seen that, that process, you've seen a number of times, because the SIP still has yet to be done. And as Kelly said, there's more, there's more to it. So you'll be getting all these eventually, but I just don't, I don't see the urgency, and I, I hope the gentleman understands.
Sure. And thank you for, for the construction, everything that you're doing. I certainly like to think I'm developer-friendly, but I also don't like to just waive our rules for, for no reason. And if, if it's not going to get you any time, then I don't think it's worth it, so.
Councilmember Ford?
And I'll just say that I was hesitant about waiving the rules, too, but I wanted to get it onto the floor, so we could have a discussion about it.
Withdraw.
Well, do we want to vote on it, or, okay, I will, I will draw my, I will formally withdraw my motion.
And who had the second?
Ford.
I did. I can withdraw that.
Withdraw the motion to waive the rules. Any other discussion in general on this? Or no, we're not voting on this. So this will come back April 23rd. Thank you for discussion. And next up, we have new resolutions. Resolution 24-188, adopt City of Oshkosh Go Transit 2023 to 2024 Transit Development Plan and recommended fare and route modifications. Transportation Committee recommends approval. Get a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Bulow?
Sure. I'm going to have a couple of questions, and I told Jim earlier today that I'd probably be reaching out, so thank you. Just some things that, you know, as I was going along, the $4 day pass, love that option. Where do, where can riders get that? Is that right on the bus? Is that ahead of time? Where can they get that easily?
Yeah, that's, we're, we're, we're still in the process of figuring that out. We are planning to procure a new fare payment system. So we're in that process of working through that contract now. And once that gets approved, then if we go with that system, they'll be able to get them, A, at our office like they can now the library, City Hall. If we go with this fare system, there's a good probability, they currently have a partnership with Roundy's, so it's feasible, you may be able to get them at Pick 'n Save, and possibly a couple other drugstores. But that's yet to be determined. So for now, the simple answer is you can get them at our current fare outlets, which are City Hall, the library, and the transit office. However, we are hopeful that we'll have that system in place, and then you'll have additional options.
No changes to the Go Connect, the former Route 10? That's still going pretty well?
Yeah, that actually, so that got funded by the county for another year. So that, the current pilot was to end, the end of March of this year, and it got extended to the end of March of next year. Ridership is not great, I will say. It's about five rides a day. So we did just this, this week, we've, are now allowing same-day rides to hopefully encourage more riders to use that, that service. So we'll see how that goes.
I'm, I understand the need for the fare increases, and I'm probably going to support them, but I just wanted to give you a chance to talk about any other alternatives that you guys discussed to prevent fare increases. You know, obviously, these are usually some of the, the most vulnerable members of our, you know, our community. So just any other discussions that you had in terms of that?
Sure. I can just give you a couple of points, and then Matt, feel free to jump in if you, if you would like to. But right now, the fares actually are only about 20% of, of our revenue. The majority of it's federal and state grants. And then, obviously, we have a revenue agreement with the school district and the technical college, and that, those things help. And then whatever's not covered by the federal and state, those revenue agreements, as well as fares, the rest is picked up by the city tax levy. So even if we get a little bit of an increase, it's not really going to make a huge difference, but it does make some difference. And the reason for doing it now is that our last fare increase was 2019. Prior to that, it was 2009. So we went 10 years without a fare increase. Now we're at five. So generally, we try to incorporate that along with the transit development plan, so we can do the, the planning process and equity analysis that, that SRF's done a great job with at that time. And the other two reasons are that, right, our ridership, as Matt said before, this year, it's increased about 9%. Our expenses went up about 17%. And that is, it's, it's wages, it's fuel, all the things Matt mentioned, parts. And despite that, our revenue has decreased. And why is revenue going down? It's because we have, you know, we have the revenue agreement with students. A lot of students are riding free now, so we haven't seen any collecting revenue for that, although we do have revenue agreement, which offsets some of that. And then there's also just a general, a lot of, you know, there's children that are six that are free. There's a lot of different free programs out there. So we just, we don't collect a lot of revenue. So basically, that's, in the simplest economic terms, is, you know, expenses are up, you know, revenues are down. So this, this puts a little bit of a dent in it. But like I said, we, we don't do this very often, so we take it pretty seriously when we do do it. And five to 10 years without any increase is generally pretty good. And I actually think that, I don't even know how much more revenue we're honestly going to collect, because with the day passes, and then if we get the fare capping, we might actually be the same. If not, it might even go down. I don't know. But that, and then this also puts us in line with our peers, you know, and we like to kind of stay within what, what our peers are doing as well.
I think it's important, this got brushed over in the, in the presentation, but Jim, I know you don't like to promise something that hasn't happened yet, but the concept of fare camping, I think, is something that might address some of Councilmember Bulow's concern. Can you talk about what you're looking at?
Sure.
And it's true, it may be part of the fare system procurement process, but I think, I think you're going to like hearing this. This is something I think is very good.
Yeah. So fare capping is, it's been around for a little bit. It's, it's gaining a lot more popularity currently. What that is, is, so if you can't afford to buy a monthly pass that's $40, so if you're paying, so say that you approve this, the fares are $2 per ride, so you're paying $2, and $2, and $2. Well, under the current system, you could pay unlimited $2 fares. With fare capping, it caps the monthly amount that you pay at the monthly pass price. So you never pay more than $40 in a month. So you could continue to pay your one-way fares. When you get to $40, the system says, you know, you're done. You don't have to pay anything else this month until the beginning of the next month. So it is, it's, it's a good way to make sure that there's, there's equity in the fare system. And the new system that if we get, which we're pretty hopeful that we're going to get, is, will allow us to do that. It has the technology where you have a scan card, so you scan, you scan, you scan. So after you scanned it, so in this case, it would be 20 times, then you'd be done for that month, and you wouldn't have to pay again until the following month. So I think that will address a lot of those concerns, as well as the day pass. I think that's going to be a pretty popular option.
So now the pressure's on Jim to actually get that system in place, because I think it's going to be a huge.
Yeah, he just promised it on TVs.
Yeah, well, kind of putting him on, putting him on spot.
The only last two comments I'll make, I, I love the idea of expanded evening service. I know, obviously, there was a price tag that we got to see on that, and you got to find a way to spit out that money. So, but just, please continue to look at ways to expand that. And then I just wanted to give you huge compliments for keeping the three month discount. I think that's a, a great savings for people that are going to be utilizing it and know they're going to be using it. Sorry for taking up a lot of time, but I had a lot of questions.
Okay. Thank you. And that was, you know, and that's a great example of where we had some public comment, and, you know, something that we hadn't really thought of that much. And we're like, oh, that's a good point. Yeah, we can do that. So, yeah, worked out well.
Councilmember Stevenson?
I think you took a lot of what I wanted to talk about. No, I would also like to echo the sentiments that I'd like to, further down the road, if we can look into those long-term options that they kind of laid out, and talk a little bit more about those. I really thought the micro-transit idea in there was a really cool concept, and something that I think is worth digging into. Also, I guess I just, maybe a little anecdote, I was reading a thing the other day, because I read random planning stuff, but it made the case for transit being linked to tourism. And I think so much we, we think about transit as, and rightfully so, a lot of our people are using this to get around and everything. But having a strong transit system means that people who come here from out of state, out of country, have a way to get around our city. I think that $4 day pass is going to be great. I know I've, I've used it in other larger cities, or if I've been on vacation, I think that's, a lot of people in the tourism sector will use that. So another kind of, I think, bucket of people, we, we kind of don't talk about as much when it comes to transit. So thank you for getting this together, and I think it's a good plan, so.
Yeah. And EAA is a great example, that we do have a lot of visitors that utilize our service during that week.
Any other discussion?
I'll just say, thank you for all of the work that you all put into this. I was a part of the, the steering committee stakeholder group, and it was really amazing to see the amount of input that you all got from the public, from riders, from drivers. And so I'm happy to see kind of the long-term recommendations in this plan, although I'm not thrilled about the, the fare increase. But I recognize that's largely because of inadequate funding that we also don't receive from the state and federal levels, and not prioritizing transit. So I would never want to see the, the free fares go away for certain populations. I think that meets a huge need and a role that we play within government. And I'm glad to also see the, the service to the DMV. I think that's a huge need. So, but overall, I think I'm very encouraged by this plan, and to see where transit service takes off from here.
No other discussion? Please call the roll on Resolution 24-188.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Present.
Erickson?
Aye.
Curate six with a present, five-one. Okay. Got it. Thank you. Curate five-one, one present.
Next up, we have Resolution 24-189, designate the month of May 2024 as No Mo May. Sustainability Advisory Board recommends approval.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So the council gets notifications when the agenda for a council meeting comes up. And I got a notification on Friday, somewhere around 3:00. I called the city manager. I went over the agenda. I called the city manager with a couple of items, and I had a little conversation with him, and he said, Paul, it's 3:00 on a Friday afternoon. What are you doing looking at the agenda? So we had a little laugh at that. And I said, well, there's a couple of things on here that I just wanted some clarification on. And I think, Mark, we talked about this one. This is in regards to not mowing the lawn and bees and such. And so I know nothing about this. So I had to do a little research. And so, yes, on Friday afternoon, I researched lawns and bees. So that's how boring I am. And so I went to the internet, and I found a couple different things here. One was, actually, I thought this was pretty interesting. There was a gal, she was here in Wisconsin, in southeastern, I think it was Ozaki County, near Lake Michigan. She had an article, I've got part of it here. I don't want to put anyone to sleep with this. But I did read her, her synopsis, and she felt that it was not really a good idea for this. And I just kind of, well, first of all, just to give you a background, she has a website. It's called, okay, Paul, what is it called? I don't, I can't remember. Anyway, the story is, No Mo May could backfire. Here's why. And she wrote this on May 6, 2022. And she's got a website giving gardening tips. She has articles and advice featured in Birds in Bloom magazine, Young House Love Blog, Luxury Magazine, Sailing Magazine, and she's written for the Ozaki Press. She's a member of the Garden, Garden Con, Wisconsin Hardy Plant Society, and the Perennial Plant Association, and she's won a couple of awards in regards to landscaping and lawns and all that. So essentially, her analysis was, the reason it's not a good idea is dandelions are not the source that you really want bees. And I guess there's, you got the honeybees and the native bees, and you want the honeybees to do the pollinations, not the native bees. And the native bees don't do this and that. I don't know. It was, it was interesting, but I was confused. So she said, by not, by doing this, you're bound to upset the people that really like the lawns to be pristine. I'm not that person, so it wouldn't upset me. And also, what it tends to do is those people will want to tend to put out more, more poison on their lawns to make sure, because, you know, while this is not being mowed, those weeds and dandelions are going to go into other people's lawns. And so that's going to create some problems. She suggested that the thing to do is take part of your lawn and have it set up for, like, a wild flower garden that will feed bees from spring through fall with appropriate plants of tulips or what, what, I don't, this is all new to me, and planting native trees, and stop using herbicides. And then I went and looked at some other websites, and there were some other comments that by allowing this, the lawns to grow this long, you're inviting rats, mice, and other rodents to take cover there. On June 1st, you have the, you can, these things will be in the lawn. You can run over little bunnies and whatever other things that are trying to hide there. It creates a breeding ground for mosquitoes. It's, it's hard on the mower when you try to finally cut this, this type of lawn. Not to say, and of course, for 30 days, it looks terrible. And then it looks bad when you cut it. It clumps up. And there were some other things that, I guess, they felt were counterproductive to that. So I got a little bit of an education on a Friday afternoon mystery roll-off. Thanks for laughing at me. Thanks for laughing at me. I told my friend about that, and he said, yeah, you are pretty boring, Paul, so, I don't know, I just think this is not going to solve the problem that we're really looking for here, so with all due respect, I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, this is the, correct me if I'm wrong, third year, right, we've done this?
That is correct.
All right, what, I mean, what's, I, I've supported this all three years, I don't participate in it, just looking at the, the thing, 600 people participated the first year, 350, they, they sign up, I'm for anything that's totally innocuous, that can bring neighborhoods together and bring community together, there's no harm here at all. The beauty of this is if you don't like it, you don't have to participate. To me, this is just a really small thing, that there's a handful of people, and by a handful, a few hundred are really excited about, so I'm totally fine with it.
Yeah, and as you see in the memo, new for 2024, Councilor Esslinger, we agree with a lot of what you said staff does, we have been doing a lot more research, and we're trying to encourage people, instead of just not mowing their lawn for the month of May, to plant flowers or vegetation that will benefit the bees and different pollinators throughout the year, throughout our growing season. So we really are trying to change that message, and this year, we're going to be sending like weekly updates, and so if it's getting above six inches, May 15th, we'll say, hey, guys, you know, the grass is really too long for the bees to get, even get in there, you can go ahead and cut it, and hey, here's some great, you know, flowers you can plant when you start your, you know, your summer planting. So we're trying to change that dialogue from just not cutting the grass, to what can you really do if you really want to help the bees.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yeah, I guess I agree with everyone. I, I agree with Mike, I definitely think that it's, it's something that's simple that we can, people kind of get into, but as staff and Paul kind of pointed out, I, I do really like pollinators, I, I get into that kind of stuff, I have wildflowers and stuff in my yard, and the stuff that you see in your yard typically is pretty low-quality food for bees, and it doesn't go feed them a ton. I, I would advocate up here, people go plant some, some native flowers, go plant some native trees, that's the best thing you can do, but if this is your thing, and you really like it, then I have more power to you.
Any other discussion? Okay, please take the roll on Resolution 24-189.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
No.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Curried five-one.
Next up, Resolution 24-190, approved acquisition of Washington School from the Oshkosh Area School District for $75,000, Plan Commission recommends approval.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Stevenson?
Yeah, I, I would just like to really thank the Oshkosh School District for this, I think that they, they worked in good faith with us, and we got a pretty darn good deal out of property, and I would like to just assure them that the dollars that we save here are going to directly impact the citizens and the, and the, moving down the line. So I, I'm really happy for this project, I'm really happy the school district decided to kind of step up, so I think this was like a great collaboration between city and the school district.
I would just add Habitat for Humanity.
And Habitat for Humanity, I apologize.
Because actually, they're paying the 75 grand for the property. I want Tom Simon to know that, we love him.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's, that's an important point, Mark, you say that again, just so people know where the funding source is coming from.
Did I love Tom Simon? Oh, okay. I love Tom Simon still. No, the, the partnership we have with Habitat for Humanity, we're taking the resources that we have that are best used. They received a grant specifically for land acquisition, it made perfect sense for them to use that. We're taking some of our grant funds and using it for the, for the demolition, the remediation of asbestos, because the school, based on when it was built and everything, we know it's going to have asbestos, that's our strength, so that's what we're bringing to the table, so that's why it's such a wonderful collaboration as well.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Habitat, I didn't mean to leave you out.
Any other discussion? I think this is a, a great project, I'm really excited for this and the collaboration and in this neighborhood, and it, we're meeting a need, so it's great. Okay, please take the roll on Resolution 24-190.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Curried six.
And last one, Resolution 24-191, approve city sponsorship of the Juneteenth Bagaish event on June 8, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Bulow?
I, I'll just say that I love this night, want to see more sponsorship when it's the right, right events coming down to, to Oshkosh, it's just absolutely fantastic.
Councilmember Esslinger?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Roloff, we did have a conversation on this also, just maybe for the, because I was unaware, maybe for the public's knowledge, this is a sponsorship where the, the fees are being waived, normally, there are fees if you want to use the, the property, and so why don't you just discuss briefly why these fees, and we've done this with other events, you know, that have been there, so what's the rationale and the philosophy, and why are the fees being waived?
Sure. Well, part of it stems from the charge that the council gave the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, the DEI Committee, and one of their duties includes implementing a public education plan and actively planning, sponsoring, and participating in events that promote and celebrate diversity. I had the, the pleasure of being invited to participate in the Juneteenth event last year, so I have some firsthand experience with it. A very well-attended event, and I think it brought a lot of the community together, I had an opportunity to meet some members of the Oshkosh 95, members of the student body at UW Oshkosh that were mistreated back in, back in the 60s, and it was the first time some of them came back to Oshkosh, and I had the opportunity to talk to them for a while, and that, I think, was part of the, the event to celebrate and, and honor the Juneteenth event, and first time having an event like that in Oshkosh. I, I want to put Councilmember Hayes on the spot, but she's, she's on the DEI Committee as well, actually, she's the chair of the committee, so I don't know if you want to add anything to it, Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, I agree that as the Chair of DEI, in determining what the strategic plan and efforts DEI would make, this is definitely one of them, having diverse events in our community that celebrate those diverse communities is important. So as the Chair, at our last DEI meeting, we did approve having the city sponsor these events, I think it's appropriate, especially in light of the ability for the city to do so, because of the locations that we have to, for, the locations that are available for events in our community. This is also important for organizations and groups who are new, and just bringing events to our city that don't have the level of funding as the larger and historically present groups in the community, I think that this helps allow those organizations to come provide a different level of events, especially when a lot of last year's efforts for Juneteenth were volunteer-focused, many of the volunteers who were at that event were also people who donated, so I think this will help continue having that event, as well as allow for it to grow each year, especially having something annual like this is going to be important.
So the business side of it is that we, for, for events that we sponsor, and we did this last year for the drag boat race event, which was put on by the Northeast Wisconsin Chinese Association in conjunction with the DEI Committee. The cost for us on the business side is, for a nonprofit entity such as the Juneteenth Bagaish group, it's a $500 rent that, that would be waived. The insurance, the city sponsor, being a sponsor of the event, will pick up the insurance, which really means that it's on our insurance, we don't pay an extra fee for it, this group would have to go out and get separate insurance, so they won't incur that cost, and we incur the risk for the event. The risk is a family event that, while it's well-attended in the leech, it doesn't require any extraordinary services from the city outside of the venue, and anybody that, I think the police and fire departments have been invited to the events in the past, and they're really more just on the community outreach side, just hanging out, talking to people, so the, the cost would be, we would go to an event like this anyway, because it's a great event to, to connect with families.
And if I just can add, I'm not sure if through the organization last year, if they were able to provide some of the similar numbers that the dragon boat races were able to do, but many attendees for the Juneteenth Festival here in Oshkosh, some of them meant, there were attendees from outside of Oshkosh that attended, and there were even some of the volunteers who came from outside of Oshkosh, so I'm not sure if they have numbers on the possible impact that, that event, the positive impact it would have had for our local businesses and hotels, but it would have, especially understanding that, that event and the setup was, began very early in the morning, and went through the evening, and knowing that some of the speakers were coming from Milwaukee, Sheboygan, things like that, I guarantee it had a greater impact to the city of Oshkosh than had a greater impact beyond just having this event for our community.
Councilmember Bulow?
She, she basically took it, but I want to...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even click my button.
No, I was going to say, on behalf of Councilmember Stevenson, I just wanted to say what a cool event for visitors and tourism, they can, they can take the bus to the event, and, you know.
Any other discussion? Okay, please take the roll on 24-191.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Curried six.
Next up, we have council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items, we have our organizational meeting next week, Tuesday, April 16th at noon, any comments about that one, city manager?
No, but just for the continuing council members, the 23rd is our photo date, the next meeting, so just, you know, prepare your wardrobes accordingly. You too, Mr. Flohm.
You showed up a little shabby last time.
That's all I have, madam.
I do expect Councilmember Bulow the bright pink blazer, or if you have a different color.
I, I do have one other color, but it's probably going to go...
If you want to coordinate, feel free to do that. Any council member announcements and statements? Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, Long Range Finance met, and we're continuing to put together a policy manual, and the idea, and hopefully I'm saying this correctly, because the finance director's looking at me, we, we had agreed that we were going to submit it to the council all-in-one large item, so we can have all of our policies approved at one time.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to take a moment to say thanks for outgoing council members, you guys have been great over the past year, I think you've gotten...
You're welcome.
You've gotten a lot done, I've enjoyed you guys, I, I think public service is a little bit thankless at times, so thank you for, for all you guys have done, so. I'll, I'll still be texting and bothering you guys into the future though, just so you're aware.
You will still see me.
Sounds good.
Just on the other side.
We'll, we'll keep the emotions for next week, Tuesday. Okay, any other announcements, statements? City manager?
Just have outstanding issues in case there are any questions, other than that, I have nothing, Madam Deputy.
I'll take a motion in a second for...
So move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned.